So we are now in public session. Members of the Board of Trustees Committee on Academic Affairs, I'm sorry, Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration. Please respond present when you hear your name. We're waiting on the chair. Vice Chairperson Ken Sunshine.
Here.
Trustee Una Clark. Okay, trustee Myra Lenars Garcia.
Present.
Great. Professor Karen Coughlin.
Present.
Great. Professor Maureen Matarazzi.
Present.
Amber Rivero.
Present.
Nigel Thomas. No, okay, and trustee Martin Burke.
Present.
Burke, okay, so we have a quorum to start the meeting. This public meeting of the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of the law allowing the attendance of meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or other similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with this executive order, the board meeting is being held via video conference with a livestream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. We're also testing out a new closed captioning feature, which you will see at the bottom of your screen. A copy of the calendar is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. And as a reminder, please mute your audio so we can ensure that everyone can be heard. I would now like to take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery and invited guests. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace.
Present.
Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor Andrea Shapiro-Davis. President Thomas Sisakunegbe, the COPS liaison.
Present.
Associate Vice Chancellor Alina Gorilak. President of the Graduate Center Robin Gurrell.
Here, present.
Interim Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at the Graduate Center, Julia Wrigley.
Present.
Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs, City College, Tony List.
Present.
Assistant General Counsel Hillary Klein.
Present.
Executive Director of Benefits Matthew Menfredi.
Present.
Terrific, okay, so Maureen is still having difficulty in getting dropped. So we're going to turn to the items requiring a vote. I'll read them off, but Ken, if you could move the items after I read them and somebody else can second them, we can keep the agenda moving. Okay?
Okay.
So let's now turn to the items requiring a vote. And given that all board members are participating remotely, I'll announce the resolutions and ask for Ken to make a motion to move the item and then members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose to an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. We'll take up the following items for approval. Action item 1A is the approval of the minutes of March 1, 2021 meeting. So Ken, if you want to move that.
Yeah, let's move the motion. Do we have a second?
Somebody second?
Somebody's got it. Somebody's got a second.
Yeah, you gotta, okay, great. So we'll now vote. And so please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes. We'll now address the policy calendar, action item B, which is the policy calendar. So policy item 1B1 is a resolution requesting the approval of the Committee on Faculty, Staff and Administration report. Dorian Gloria is the Vice Chancellor who's going to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. The CFSA report reflects a total of 110 employee actions, including 60 fellowship leaves, 28 faculty appointments and reappointments with tenure, 11 acting or interim appointments, and nine resignations or transfers. We also have two additional appointments from Medgar Evers College. This will go to the full board agenda to be published next week.
Terrific, okay, so Ken.
So moved, do we have a second?
Second, Amber Rivero.
Great, thanks Amber. We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose this item. Okay, the item passes. So the next policy item 1B2 is a resolution to implement paid family leave benefits for members of the executive compensation plan, classified managerial staff, and other non-represented employees. And again, we'll call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background.
Paid family leave benefits provide employees with job-protected, paid time off to bond with a newly born, adopted, or foster child, care for a family member with a serious health condition, or assist loved ones when a family member is deployed abroad on active military service. Pursuant to collective bargaining agreements, the university already provides paid family leave benefits for its eligible represented employees. Public employers can also opt in nonrepresented employees and provide paid family leave benefits through an insurance carrier. Paid family leave insurance coverage is funded through employee payroll contributions that are set each year to match the cost of coverage. And the rate of employee contributions is reviewed annually, subject to change by the New York State Department of Financial Services.
Okay.
Yeah. So moved, do we have a second?
Myra Garcia, second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes. Okay, policy item 1B3 is a resolution to amend the governance plan of Brooklyn College at the City University of New York. And Assistant General Counsel Hillary Klein is going to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. So the proposed amendments to this Brooklyn College governance plan have been approved by the college's undergraduate student government and Brooklyn College's Policy Council, and they are recommended by the President of Brooklyn College. The Policy Council is comprised of the Faculty Council, representing faculty and other instructional staff, the undergraduate student government, the graduate student organization, and representatives from the administration. All 20 representatives from Faculty Council and the administration serve multi-year terms. Currently, all 10 student representatives serve only one-year terms. The proposed amendments would provide more continuity for undergraduate student representatives by extending their terms to two years, which would allow them to address major issues that may span multiple years.
Okay, Ken.
Yeah, so moved, do we have a second?
Myra Garcia, second.
Okay, and any discussion? Okay, and I just want to comment that trustee Clark has now joined us. So for the record, as we're voting, we will vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes. Next, we have policy item 1B4. It's a resolution to appoint David Gomez as Commissioner of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York. And Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria is going to provide further information on this item.
Thank you. Dr. David Gomez, distinguished academic leader, teacher, and experienced administrator. Served as President of Ostos Community College from 2014 through 2020. Prior to his presidency, Dr. Gomez was a longtime senior administrator at Kingsborough Community College, where he served as interim Vice President for Academic Affairs and Provost after having been Vice President for Academic Administration, Program Planning, and Development, Dean of Instructional Services and Student Support, and Dean of Instructional Services, as well as a professor in the Department of Behavioral Sciences and Human Services at Kingsborough Community College, beginning in 1993. Dr. Gomez holds an EDD in Higher and Adult Education from Teachers College, Columbia University, and an MA in Higher Education Administration, also from Teachers College, Columbia University, and a BA in English Literature from the State University of New York at Albany. If approved, this resolution would authorize the Chancellor to appoint David Gomez as one of three Commissioners of the Civil Service System of the City University of New York for an uncompensated six-year term commencing June 1, 2021, through May 31, 2027. Thank you.
Move the item.
Second, Myra Garcia.
Great, thanks Myra. Any discussion?
Just want to thank President Gomez for always being a great CUNY citizen and affected his role even in retirement.
Great. Okay, so we will now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes. Next is policy item 1B5 is a resolution to appoint Mohamed Atallah as Vice Chancellor for Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management at the City University of New York. And I again call on Vice Chancellor Dorian Gloria to provide further background on this item.
Mohamed Atallah has been serving as the Executive Director of Facilities and Services at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign since August 2018. And prior to that, he served as Assistant Vice President and Chief Facilities Officer at McMaster University from 2011 to 2018, and at Toronto District School Board from 2000 to 2011. Dr. Atallah is a professional engineer with over 25 years of experience in senior executive and administrative portfolios in education, corporate leadership, as well as strategic planning and policy development. The appointment of Dr. Atallah as Vice Chancellor will provide an experienced leader to manage capital construction projects, facilities planning, physical plant operations, and maintenance throughout the university, who will also serve as a member of the Chancellor's Cabinet and a staff to the Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning, Construction, and Management. Dr. Atallah holds a PhD from the University of Waterloo in Construction Engineering and Management, and an Executive Master of Business Administration from McMaster University. The Chancellor highly recommends this appointment effective June 14, 2021, at an annual salary of $270,000.
I move the item.
Myra Garcia, second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. The item passes. Policy item 1B6, congratulations Hector. Policy item 1B6 is a resolution to name the Patty and J. Baker Endowed Scholarship at Hunter College. And I'll call on Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further background information on this item.
Thank you. This is a generous gift. This represents a generous gift from Patty and J. H. Baker, who have been longstanding and generous supporters of Hunter College. Over in recent years, they've given $13 million to the Hunter College Foundation, and most notably helping to acquire and renovate the Baker Theater Building. Patty Baker is a Hunter Theater alumna and an active Broadway producer, while Mr. Baker is a retired businessman who most recently served as a CEO and Chair of Kohl's Department Stores. They are both prolific philanthropists and serve on numerous boards, including Ms. Baker serving as a trustee of the Hunter College Foundation for the past 13 years, and also as the Chair of the Hunter College Theater Advisory Board. Mr. Baker has served on a number of boards also. In December 2020, the Bakers made their most recent donation to the Hunter College Foundation in the amount of $2 million. This gift is to establish an endowed scholarship, which will support Hunter's graduates and undergraduate students. And they want to, based upon their generosity and dedication to Hunter, the new fund will be named the Patty and J. Baker Endowed Scholarship. And the naming fully satisfies, the amount of the gift fully satisfies the naming policy. The gift exceeds the minimum requirement by a factor of 20 times.
I move the item.
Thanks Myra. Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes. Congratulations. Okay, next up is a policy item 1B7. It's a resolution to name the John Anthony Shardivon Endowed Scholarship at Eugenia Marie Ostos Community College. And I again call Senior Vice Chancellor Glenda Grace to provide further information. You're muted Glenda.
Muted.
Has to happen at every meeting, so. I made it happen. So Mrs. Esther Rodriguez Shardivon currently serves as a Senior Vice President of Administration and Finance at Ostos Community College, and she's dedicated nearly two decades of a career at Ostos. And in March of 2021, made a generous donation to the Ostos Community College Foundation in the amount of $75,000. This gift will establish an endowed scholarship to support students matriculating at Ostos and continuing to a four-year college degree program. And it will support students in excellent academic standing without consideration of financial or legal status, with preference to those pursuing historical studies and demonstrating community service. With the donation, Mrs. Rodriguez Shardivon honors the life of her late husband, John Anthony Shardivon, who passed away unexpectedly in November 20. He's remembered by his family as the Indiana Jones of the family, an adventurous spirit who made friends and found happiness everywhere he went. And as someone who worked with Vice President Rodriguez Shardivon, her husband was pretty amazing. I remember the amazing photos that he shared when he went to Petra and when they were in Patagonia. And he was an avid traveler and writer. And this, the naming of his scholarship is to celebrate his passion for learning and spreading joy. And because of that, the fund will be named the John Anthony Shardivon Endowed Scholarship, and the naming fully satisfies the naming policy.
Good, it's good to see contribution to Ostos. I move the item.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Right, the item passes. Congratulations. Policy item 1B8 is a resolution to accept a grant from the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation for the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund. Again, call to provide further background.
So we got, established in 1996, the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation supports multiple national grant-making programs and several museums. Its mission is to improve the quality of people's lives through grants supporting the performing arts, environmental conservation, medical research, child well-being, and through preservation of the cultural and environmental legacy of Doris Duke's properties. On February 23, 2021, the Board of the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation approved a $1.2 million grant in support of the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund at CUNY. The grant stipulates that all funds are to be dispersed to CUNY students in the form of relief grants no later than March 14, 2023. The Research Foundation received the full grant payment on April 13, 2021, and with this resolution, the Chancellor seeks authorization to accept a transfer of 1.2 million that was donated by the Doris Duke Charitable Foundation from the Research Foundation to be deposited in the Chancellor's Emergency Relief Fund at CUNY.
Good, move the item. Second.
Myra Garcia, second.
Una Clark.
Great. Any discussion?
Let me just.
Any discussion? Nope, okay.
Just, just, I just want to say two quick things. Thanks, Andrew Shapiro-Davis, for our hard work in making this gift possible, teamwork in getting all this funding for our students. And I believe that with this donation, we either hit or are very close to the $10 million mark in getting funds for our students to support them during the pandemic. So great team effort, and I want to commend everybody. And we want to get that money in so we can get the money out quickly to our students.
And that it did exceed the $10 million in the fund with this gift.
Congratulations.
Anybody else? Great, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Item passes, congratulations. Policy item 1B9 is a resolution requesting to appoint Yanis Andropoulos as distinguished professor at City College at the City University of New York. And I call on the Executive Vice Chancellor Jose Luis Cruz, sorry, to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. Professor Yanis Andropoulos is a world-leading researcher in the field of fluid dynamics, turbulence, macroelectromechanical systems, and wind energy. He has a long and internationally renowned career in his field, and is conducting scholarship and teaching of the highest caliber. His work on energy harvesting is just one of the many practical topics in which he has contributed and is continuing to contribute at a very high level of productivity. I want to acknowledge Provost Tony List, who is on hand in case he wants to add additional information regarding this candidacy.
You have nothing to add.
Okay, Ken.
Yeah, I move the item. Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. The item passes, congratulations. Policy item 1B10 is a resolution requesting to appoint Hernan Maxx as distinguished professor at the City College of the City University of New York. And I call on Executive Vice Chancellor Jose Luis Cruz to provide further background on this item.
Thank you. Professor Hernan Maxx is an internationally renowned scholar of complex systems, soft condensed matter physics, and network theory. His name is well-known in the scientific community, and he has made a number of important discoveries, recognized with publication in high-profile venues, and substantial influence in the field broadly. I now call on Provost Tony List in case he has any additional information he would like to provide.
Thank you, nothing to add.
Move the item.
Second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item carries, congratulations. Policy item 1B11 is a resolution requesting to award Dr. Lisha Rugless with early tenure at the City College of New York with an application of Bylaw 6.2.2. And I again call on Provost Cruz.
Thank you. Dr. Lisha Ruglass has developed an influential and productive program of clinical translational research by using clinical trials to investigate therapeutic treatments for patients diagnosed with PTSD, and exploring the neural basis of substance use disorder by using neuroimaging methods such as electroencephalography. Dr. Ruglass's grandmanship is impressive, securing support from federal and state sources for both research and training projects. The psychology faculty consider her an outstanding researcher, a caring mentor, and a strong advocate for the underserved. I ask Provost Tony List to indicate if he has anything else to add.
I will just say that this is early tenure technically as a result of the fact that she went to Rutgers for two years, and we managed to get her back to City College. So we're very happy to have her back. Thank you.
I move the item.
Second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, that item passes, congratulations. Policy item 1B12 is a resolution requesting to award Matthew Sefir with early tenure at the Graduate Center of the City University of New York with an application of Bylaw 6.2.2. And I again call on Provost Cruz.
Thank you. Dr. Matthew Sefir is a highly regarded researcher on the topics of molecular and nano-scale spectroscopy, and most notably, his recent body of work on molecular singlet fishing. Dr. Sefir is highly regarded in his field on a national and international level as an outstanding scientist who has led an incredibly productive and highly collaborative research program in singlet fishing resulting in many impactful publications. Dr. Sefir has an excellent record in regard to service to the institution and his field, currently serving on the PhD Physics Program Executive Committee, as well as on the Program's Admissions Committee. I now call on our colleagues from the Graduate Center, either President Renell or Provost Wrigley, to add any additional information on this candidacy.
We were thrilled to have attracted him to the Graduate Center and the ASRC. He's, his star keeps rising, and we're glad to have him.
Great, I move the item.
Second.
Correct. Any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes, congratulations. Policy item 1B13 is a resolution requesting to award Jemma Shelton an early tenure at the Silverman School of Social Work at Hunter College with an application of Bylaw 6.2.2. Then again, I call on the Provost to provide information.
Thank you. Dr. Jemma Shelton has an exceptional record of scholarship, excellence in teaching, and outstanding service to the university. Dr. Shelton's career as a social work practitioner, researcher, and educator has consistently centered around LGBTQ youth and young adult homelessness. Dr. Shelton is an active member of several other committees within the school, and is also involved in many professional and community-based organizations locally, nationally, and internationally. Their service to the community has been recognized with multiple local and national awards. I now ask President Jennifer Rabb if she has anything to add to this candidacy.
No, thank you, that was perfect. She's a really stellar contributor and scholar, thank you.
Move the item.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item passes, congratulations. Policy item 1B14 is a resolution requesting to award Michaela Sawyer early tenure at Hunter College with an application of Bylaw 6.2.2. And again, I call Provost Cruz.
Thank you. Dr. Sawyer is a nationally respected scholar, conducting important innovative research that addresses one of the nation's most pressing problems. Dr. Sawyer's work combines empirical data, in-depth interviews with teenagers, and a sophisticated theoretical framework, providing great insight into the complexities of the juvenile and adult criminal justice systems, while documenting while documenting how young men, who are entrapped in criminal activities and social networks, can still fight to find ways to succeed. Dr. Sawyer has published two well-received influential scholarly books, published by a top academic university press. And I call on President Jennifer Rabb in case she has anything else to add to this candidacy.
That's that. You and the Chancellor, she's a great resource for the plans for education technology because she has a real expertise in that as well. So thank you for your consideration.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Am I allowed to ask a question about tenure now or right after we vote on this item?
Is it related to this item? Meaning, other, I mean, is it related to this person? Or is it, it's about tenure in general? Go ahead. You can ask now. It's fine.
Thank you so much. So just out of curiosity, I just want to know, is this the committee that does the final oversight over these tenure appointments? And if so, are we tracking how often? And this is not to subject to this person's validity about their tenure appointment, but just in general, I want to know, do we have or are we tracking oversight on how often tenured appointment and full-time faculty appointments and reappointments are going to minoritized individuals? And if there's equity in these appointments across the university?
I will be happy to answer that. The answer is yes. Through a collaboration between the Office of Academic Affairs and the Office of Human Resources, we do track the over or underutilization of different groups, both through our recruitment, retention, tenure, and promotion processes. And those data inform our equity and diversity programs.
Thank you, Provost Cruz.
Okay, so Ken, is, is there any other discussion on this item?
I move the item.
I second it.
Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. Okay, the item carries, and there are no more policy items. So Ken, if you want to move to adjourn.
Yeah, so moved. Moved to adjourn.
Do we have a second, anyone?
Second, Yanis Garcia.
Great, thanks, Myra. Thanks, everybody, for your patience. The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.